All right. We're here for the Finance and Facilities Committee's special meeting. Only special because we couldn't make it the first Tuesday of the month. Other than that, it's not particularly special. Although, we do have with us, for the first time, our new Finance Director, Rita.
Yay!
For the record, it's July 15th. It is 6:0 something, 6:02. We have a full complement of the committee. We also have our esteemed Chairwoman with us, Bev Washington. And we have some people on the line as well. Thank you for attending.
We have Lori Lapine.
Yes. I see Chris Jenkins. I see Ian Thomas. I see Mike Whitney, the two members of the Board. And I see Sherri Fakers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, wonderful. Oh, and Lori's up there, too.
Yeah.
And Caitlin, of course, our esteemed war correspondent. All right. First order of business is the review of the meeting minutes, June 3rd meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments, questions, complaints? Nah, strike that. I'm kidding about the complaints. Jay, Jen, anything?
No.
Okay. Unlike last night, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moves.
Okay. Jen moves. I heard Jay second.
Second.
You seconded the second time. Okay. Any discussion? All right, fine. Motion passes. Thank you. Next order of business is the Director of Finance report. Again, Rita, you're on. So, we've got a couple of things on here, but why don't you start off the way you want to start off? And I'll lead some honors.
I'll pass out if you want.
No, don't pass out. Got time yet?
Summary extended reports. And I think they were emailed to you.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
The non-certified staff pay schedule, Lori might have to comment.
Lori, yeah. Lori can get us started with that while we're passing these out. You wanted to do the non-cert because she's up there right now.
Okay.
Would you like to unmute and share with us the non-cert?
Staff pay.
All right, I'm here.
All right. Non-certified staff pay schedule.
Want to just orient people who are new to this? It's our non-union hourly and stipend positions.
So, this is a routine schedule that we publish each year after the budget season has closed, as we start the new calendar year. It's an internal document that we use for payroll and human resources to identify the pay rates for the non-union staff.
That was too brief.
And influenced by minimum wages, right? Minimum wage law? So, we're in compliant.
We set the rates according to, during the budget season, we talked about when we set the rates based on the non-certified staff, who are the lower-income earners to get ahead of the minimum wage increase that the state is imposing per year, rather than having to have an unbudgeted expense in January. We've accounted for that during the budget season this year.
Okay. Jay's got a question.
I know that we all receive this electronically. I believe the public has access to it on the website. But I'm just wondering if we have anybody to project the documents to discuss.
Um, let me check with Caitlin to see that she has it. We always send it to them, but let me check.
And I can forward them to her as well.
Daddy, could you forward it to me? I'm not finding it.
Sure. Okay.
We should have, like, intermission music or something playing.
Yeah.
An organ or, you know.
Can I ask a question? Where were you?
You want me to recognize you?
Yeah. Welcome to Dean.
You know what happens if I recognize you?
What? He says mess with me. I just question the.
You're my boss, kind of.
Lori, does the 2%, like, where you have TUTA, and it says $27.54, 2%? Are those the increases that you're giving them?
That's correct. The percentage noted is the increase that Dean applied.
Okay. And how are we doing with the substitute teacher with the 135? Is that pretty competitive or what?
We adjusted it to be competitive.
Okay.
Here previously 125, we moved to 135.
Okay.
And building sub went up also, right, Lori? A little bit?
That's correct.
So, just for historical giggles, when was a sub paid 75 dollars an hour?
A long time ago.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, I remember a couple of substitute teachers, you know, they got paid, oh, 75 bucks a day, you know.
A day or a?
No.
A day.
A day.
Well, that's the wrong one, Caitlin.
I remember Mrs. D.
Jen, do you have any questions regarding the rates?
I did.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily the rates. I thought we outsourced adult ed. So, I was just curious why we have a night school adult ed director for $12,000.
We have, I explained that we actually have a program at Fitch where students can get their diploma from Fitch, and we actually had them graduate, a group of them, I think about 10 students. And then, the outsourced is really for the GED and the EL, and that's across with New London.
New London.
So, there are two different ones, and they're both grant-funded. And I did hear, that was the grant I was worried that we wouldn't receive. It was zeroed out, but today I heard that the adult grant did appear.
It's on.
So, all of these worries, you know, and so.
$250,000, right?
Yeah.
There's two of them.
Oh, there's two grants?
There's a cooperative, there's two. I looked on AGMS, and the budgets are there.
Yeah.
And I think it's $60,000. One is 200, so together about 250.
Yeah, 250, okay.
So, the people who are in charge, I think it's split, it's split between two people. And they run the high school program for in-person.
Okay.
And it's really a good program because there are some kids who, at 18, 19, they haven't graduated, but they want to graduate from Fitch, and they want to work. So, they will, you know, leave the high school, but come to the high school at night and finish their degree and get a diploma.
Yeah, this is the diploma program.
It's the diploma program. So, there's two separate.
Thank you.
Sherri, any questions?
No, I'm sorry. So, this meeting's agenda came out in two different emails. One with the embedded links to the document that we're discussing now, and one with some last-minute additions. So, I'm trying to send for Kate both. What I would suggest going forward is that really all of this document should be posted on the website 24 hours before the meeting, so that everybody can see it, board members, public, and everything else, rather than it just going out to select few. That's just my personal suggestion going forward.
I'll make sure that happens.
Yeah, I'm now sending her the.
Okay.
Initial agenda, which has an embedded one. So, sorry about that.
So, Jay, are you saying that you don't have, well, you must have, because it was the paper record, the paper document that we got with the agenda? So, your concern is about other people?
Oh, it was said in two parts.
Yeah, I mean, just having access to who might tune in or watch at a later date, if we're ready to have everything. In an agenda packet on the website, the time that the agenda's created, everybody has equal access to everything. And then, in my case, to send her the last-minute additions, I failed to attach to her the embedded agenda with the link to the original, because this came out in Jersey's room.
I understand what you're saying, Jay. I'll make sure, though, that we have it in the minutes of the meeting, so it's all there together.
Right.
So, we'll include that.
Right.
Yeah. And we'll try to make sure that happens in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Something you want to share with the class?
No, we just wanted.
No, we're just looking around.
Yeah. Are all these rates pretty competitive, Lori?
Yeah, we spent quite a bit of time working on a schedule that we felt was getting much more competitive compared to where we had been. So, I think, I think we're doing much better.
Okay.
I think there's still a little room to grow, but we did what we thought we could afford in the budget process this year.
Okay.
And that'd be my basic question, which is that these rates are accounted for in our '25, '26 budget, right?
Correct. The budget was built with the schedule intact.
Okay. So, at least on that basis, there wouldn't be a bubble of any sort. Jen?
Where, oh, maybe I won't ask this, and you have the right not to respond, because it might be, like, confidential with salaries and stuff. But where do you think we have a risk of losing people to, you know, surrounding communities? I know you said we're trying to make it fair, but I'm not really sure if there's one particular position that we should be worried about.
What I would say in response to that, Jen, is we've seen a slowing of that activity each time we increase the rate, so that activity has slowed down.
Okay.
So, that lets us know that we're being much more competitive in the local market.
Okay.
You know, that's probably all I could really share as of right at the moment.
That's fine. Like I said, yeah. Yeah, no, thank you.
I would also add that during those ARPSER days, when we had those extra funds, we saw where other districts, who probably had larger amounts of that, were able to pay more. And I think that's part of the slowdown, too. Those funds went away, and a lot of us are, you know, have had to take deductions in budget, so.
So, bottom line, people are moving, but we're not hemorrhaging.
Yeah.
Right.
That's correct.
We stabilized all of our workforce at this point, other than the paraeducators. We still see some movement.
Okay.
But the rest of our workforce, all of the positions have stabilized.
Thank you. Jay?
Yeah, so I just want to point out that, you know, sadly, a few of these rates are within, I believe, 15 cents of minimum wage. By state law, that now adjusts annually based on inflation. And so, I believe it will adjust on January 1st. And I don't know what the projection is at this point, but obviously, it's just sad to know that some of these positions are barely keeping up with minimum wage and will have to actually increase by law on January 1st.
Lori, what will minimum wage be on January 1st? Do you have an idea?
No, they usually come with that later in the fall. But the last two-year trend has been between 5% and 6% increase. So, when we set these new rates, we moved them by 5% to account for trying to stay ahead of the minimum wage, as Jay has mentioned.
Okay. So, you're saying that the budget was built with these rates in mind, these rates, if the increase that's going to come out are effective January 1st, that would still be within budget, if our prediction is correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
As long as they don't increase above 5%, where we have to move the rates more.
Right.
But we accounted for 5% in the budget for a number of those items.
Okay. So, that's the best we could do?
Yes.
I mean, sort of, just like doubling everybody's pay, just to, you know, make sure. You know? There's staying ahead, and then there's getting way ahead. All right. Any other questions on our non-cert staff pay schedule?
What does ESY stand for, Susan?
Extended Year Program, School Year. And that's the program that's now currently at Mary, oh, Mary Morrison, Mystic River Magnet. And, you know, for special needs students, it's written into their IEP that they could lose ground during the summer, and so they go to that program.
Mm-hmm. All right. Anything else before we move on? All right. Drum roll, please. Status of year-end FY '25 financial report. This was handed out. It's on the screen. I'm going to put a date on mine.
So, this report is a summary as of July 12th. I've seen fluctuations in, you know, the encumbrances were closing them out. It looks like salaries, you know, they're, it went down from the last report, but we're still looking at all the encumbrances, so this is just a projection as of the 12th. And every day I look at it, if you have any questions on certain categories, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Well, you and I took a look at the 414 overage in supplies, and we realized that was the electricity, and we knew that was coming. But then, we also see that in benefits, we have available balance of close to $1 million. And so, I know that we do want to make some contribution towards OPEB, but that's kind of a safety valve right there.
Jen, questions?
So, why the favorability in benefits? Because shouldn't that track with salaries? Did something happen from what happened?
So, then, some encumbrances have been released. Like, we encumber for FICA, we encumber for tuition, there's all types of benefits besides the OPEB.
Yeah.
So, when we release the encumbrances, it's more favorable than the last report.
Okay.
Jay, any questions?
So, without drilling down into the follow-up, the reasons for this, and obviously, we will be doing that example. First of all, welcome, Rita. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here, and we know it's a lot to sort of dig into, you know, given that you've been here a short time. One of the things that comes up from time to time is members ask whether or not we need to take affirmative votes to move this money around at the end of the year. You know, obviously, these accounts have to now be zeroed out. I believe that timeline, you have until the end of the year to closing encumbrances?
We actually will be closing.
Through the December?
We'll be closing them way before December. December is the final, our report is due usually at December 31st to the state of Connecticut. Any adjustments are due by December. But I plan to close encumbrances by August, like, the second week in August. I have to report to the state by September 1st, all of the expenses. So, we have a lot of work to do in the next month.
The question always comes up, you know, do we have to sit down and vote to move from the accounts that are over to the accounts that are short? You know, we have a policy about transfers. The board has to approve transfers. And it's my understanding that that is, say, for example, you have a budget, and you decide you're going to end one program, begin a new program, or in some way shift your priorities from the accepted budget, and so you have to vote on that. But in your experience, do boards take a positive vote when you're zeroing out these accounts at the end of the year, once there really aren't any decisions to be made?
In my experience, I've done, I've presented budget transfers every month, so that's what I plan to do. And yes, at the end of the year, I call it a true-up transfer, which trues up and makes things zero all the way across the board. That has been my way of doing things. So, I believe the transfer will be large, you know, just because it's moving from every line. It's not, it's not because we're over in largely in one area or another. But I can do the true-up transfer, but that will be the last, the very last thing, once encumbrances are cleared, in my opinion.
But we'll be ahead of it for next year.
You're confident that all of those invoices and all of those encumbrances will be closed within a couple of weeks from now?
Well, I'm thinking mid, I'm going to say mid-August, because I have to file with the state all of the grants by about mid-August. The big report is due September 1st. So, if I'm not on target, you know, I'm hoping, but I'm going to be meeting with my staff for the next two weeks and closing out these encumbrances. The salaries are a little tricky because we pay the teachers throughout the summer.
Right.
So, in my experience, I have done those payrolls early. I'm not sure we can do that this year, but that is my plan for next year. So, I'll have to just do journal entries and accruals to make sure that the expense is in there before we pay that last payroll in August, because I think the last payroll for the teachers is August 29th.
Oh, gee.
And I can't wait that long, too. So, it'll be, but luckily, the teachers, we can, we have a definite number, because they've already stopped the services. It's last year's, you know, numbers. It's, this week, I believe, will be the final payroll for last year for hourly employees, so, because there's one or two days in this week's payroll. So, that's another thing that we wait for, as well as looking at all the purchase orders and closing all the, you know, purchase orders and getting invoices. But I'm hoping mid-August.
We have had issues in the past where we got very late invoices from vendors. And I know that Ray had sent out some letters this year to basically encourage everybody to submit everything early. But it was literally a year where we received a substantial invoice, I believe, from one of the transportation vendors in the bag for the previous fiscal year, which is problematic, you know, for.
I agree.
To get to pay that last year's funds.
I agree.
So, I just recall that the adjustments later, and so even though you do report on September 1st, I assume that there sometimes are even later adjustments to come along.
In my experience, there typically are. They're usually not very large. I do have my staff calling vendors. We have been in touch with the transportation company more than once. I spoke to Kate this morning, and we will continue to make sure, you know, as best as we can, that there's no outstanding invoices by the end of this month. But, yeah, that does happen, and typically, if some invoice comes in after September, I have, we've had, my experience is, you put it in the current year, and don't go back, unless you have a carryover fund. If you have carryover funds, obviously, you can use that.
Non-lapsing.
Non-lapsing. I call them carryover 2% non-lapsing, unless you have some funds there. But sometimes, the new budget does end up taking, taking some of the expenses from the previous year, if the vendor just never sends it to us, or, yeah.
Now, is the bus transfer? I'm sorry. Go on, Jay.
No, I was just going to say that we've received some conflicting information over the years from various monitors about forcing us, you know, we received a late invoice in November, forcing us to go back and take them out of the previous year's tons, even though the books are technically closed. I guess my point is, you know, when we talk about the board voting on all these transfers, you know, do you anticipate that every single month, you're going to be transferring money back and forth to accounts, and we're actually going to be voting? That's how you, your experience is then, you're going to vote on these? Because we've had situations where we had a property damage claim. We paid money out, you know, obviously, that put us over budget in certain areas. You know, we could have immediately made a transfer from another account to make that up, but then we received an insurance. You know, so I just foresee us, like, transferring money back and forth all year, whereas other business managers have basically said, allow the accounts to run, so we can see where the true deficits are, so that we can build the budget for the following year, and then zero it out at the end of the year. So, I mean, I don't expect you to give an encyclopedia answer to this, but these are the sorts of conversations that people have had over the years and have questions, and I'm not sure that those will come up any further.
Well, I want to add that salaries, I do not transfer every month. So, those are going to go in the negative/positive all year long. I typically, in the past, have done two transfers for salary adjustments, you know, when you have turnover in staff, and they either come in higher or lower. There's going to be transfers in the salaries that I will not do throughout the year. But department budgets, we know when a purchase order is submitted, whether or not they have the money or not. So, my practice has always been, if you don't have the money, you transfer it from another line, so that you keep the schools and the departments in balance. So, that's been my experience. I agree, we're going to have about, you know, my experience has been about 300 transfers a year, so it, you know, it could vary here, I'm not sure. But if you don't let the purchaser to go over, then you shouldn't have a negative balances. I think it's been in the past, they've let, they've let it go over as long as they remain positive in the department. But that's very hard to track for my staff. So, that's my goal. I'm not saying it's perfect, and I'm not saying it might change, really, until we get into the weeds of the new year. I won't know. But I know I already have a couple of small transfers, like, $700. You know, they're not big, and typically, we'll process them, and then I'll bring them to the board every month for the previous month, and you guys can vote on them. That's what I've been used to. But for salaries, no, I don't plan on transferring all year round. You wait until the end, and then you do the true-up.
Thank you very much.
Great. This is a good question. So, on the average, how many transfers do you think we have a month?
I can't really say. I mean, I've only seen one so far from the department. We do have, we may have some transfers because it was put in the wrong function, you know, because that happens. So, I haven't seen that many yet. I'm hoping it's not 300.
I think that's one of Jay's concerns, that, you know, that each meeting, we'll have, like, 10, 15 transfers to go through, and that's going to bog down the meeting, for this board, anyway.
Right.
I mean, it would be two hours just on the transfers alone. But I think.
But I did look at the policy. The policy says transfers between functions, and so I'm not used to doing just transfers, just bringing to the board transfers between functions. And so, if we do that, I think it'll be less transfers.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? If it's just between functions, I don't think it's going to be as many.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
I'm rolling back a little bit, so I just wanted to understand, like, for the transportation, the bus, how good were they with their requisitions, like, because we should have a good, when we set out our requisition and our PO, we should have a good sort of assessment of how much they've utilized and they haven't billed?
For regular ed, I agree.
Yeah.
For homeless and special ed, it could be changes throughout the year that we're still catching up on. So, yes, for regular ed, I agree with you, the requisition, the PO that was approved in the beginning of the year, you can have extra runs that happen when school closes early, all of that. But for regular ed, it's, we should be able to close those out early. I know we're looking at the transportation, because it still has a big encumbrance.
Okay. Yeah, no, that was the thing. And then, I guess, it's just something to consider, if you don't want to do transfers all the time, just, and maybe you do have it already, and it's just not shown, it's like, like a forecast. So, this way, you're just forecasting, because in my, in my experience, the budget is basically dead the minute it's signed, right, or approved? So, like, as the year. So like, as the year progresses, like, updating the budget for the latest estimate. So even though we're not officially moving, it's just a thought, I'm not saying to do it, but, so this way, if it does look like it's 300 transfers, like, this is an alternative view. So, okay. That was it.
We, we've talked in the past, well, mused is a better word, about adopting a policy, and I don't know whether this is legit, of telling all our vendors, you've got to get your invoices to us by X date. And failing to do that means we don't owe you anything. It probably wouldn't pass muster, but it would be nice to explore that issue. That way, we have some control. In an ideal world, we've got to get all your bills by July 15th, and then, you know, then we're all set. After that, it's un-boughty, we're not paying it. I don't know if we can get away with that. I don't know if you've ever seen that.
I've never seen it. I do, I, I'm pretty firm about sending emails and saying, you know, we're going to close our, we need to close our books.
Right.
I mean, grants as well.
Yeah.
You need to have these invoices by a certain date. I don't know if we can keep, like, ever sourced to that, you know, to that policy. No, I'm just saying, I've never seen it, but, but, um, but...
I mean, the big ones, really, there are, are energy.
Correct.
And transportation.
And transportation.
Transportation has proven to be, you know, kind of a wild card in the past.
Yes.
And I think for most of the services and goods that we purchase, we have an idea going out. But we're, it's like, you know, hey, I had no idea what was on my credit card statement. Well, you would have known, had you actually kept some sort of a tally in your head, or in the back of your hand or something. So don't be too shocked when you see the bill at the end of the month. But I understand, things like transportation, you could have thought, well, I, we're, I think we're buying these services, but, you know, between this game or that game or whatever, now the bill's a little bigger than it was before, or a lot bigger than we thought it was going to be. So we really don't have any control up front. It's just one of those, how do we cap that?
And you have no control over electricity up front. You can project a 5%, 10%, but they can do what they want.
Right, it's all based on, well, I mean, I know I paid so much when I turned down my air conditioning last year per month, and it's probably going to be something like that this year in the ballpark, anyway, but no telling.
Right.
And even if we've signed a contract, it's the delivery that's been getting to us, because the delivery can go up and down, mostly up.
So at the end of the day, there's really no, we're sort of at the mercy, if you will.
For those two categories. It is tough.
Okay.
And I'll say, those transfers that I was talking about, a lot of them are typically in utilities, people's services. It's things that you can't control, and things change, right? So the majority of transfers I've seen, the department ones should be minimized. And I don't really believe, if they're in, within the department, that they have to come to the board for approval. They're, they're spending their budget, right? That's just my beliefs, you know, but by function, I understand if you, you guys need to know or want to know, this program is changing to this program.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's the intent of the...
Yeah, that's the intent of the, of the policy.
So here's the, I was going to say the $64,000 question, but it's more like the $32,000 question. This, this available balance as of the middle of the month, um, not going to hold you to it, how good is that figure? In other words, we're slightly in the black. Are we going to be, how confident are you about that number? That you'd just rather not go out on that little limb?
It's hard to say, because of the encumbrances, how confident am I in the encumbrances? I'm confident in the payroll encumbrances, because I looked at them and I calculated most of them. The, the, all of the purchase orders, I didn't approve them, I didn't put them in. So that's why we have to look at each single one in the next couple of weeks, to really know. I know she's closing PO, she talked to me today, that there were some that have balances, so that number could go up. But it also could go down when electricity bills come in, and they're more, I'm just making an example.
Right, exactly, yeah, so...
But I do believe that we have flexibility and the, and the benefits, oh, headline. So...
That's a good thing.
A lot, really good.
Okay. So, any other questions?
No.
Jay, anything else?
Um, just out of curiosity, so have we paid all of the board contributions?
I was going to say, I'm not getting anything paid.
I believe so. I spoke with Heather, and she told me the next payment due is July's payment. So I can double-check with the town, but I was told that all payments have been made for the board contribution.
And that's what I remember Ray saying, that he did pay the final bill in June.
So then we don't owe the town anything?
No.
Good. We don't like...
By knowledge, yes, that they've all been paid this.
You owe them your obedience. Anyhow.
I know we'll be discussing, discussing this more, but I am relieved that this number is currently projected to be, um, in the black. So, thank you.
Is there anything on this page that you're concerned about? That you're like, mm, I don't know?
I can't say that I am concerned, because, um...
Especially concerned, yeah.
Especially concerned, I mean, I look at, I'm going to be looking at this every day, like, right, you know, did in the past, to follow the encumbrances. But I, there's nothing that I'm really concerned, overly concerned about. Still trying to dig into the weeds and see what's in here, you know?
I'll let you know. I'm so happy you're here. I was, I was concerned, you, you weren't here. We went from, oh god, everybody's going to hear me again, 13 million to 1 million to 500,000 to 200,000, and now we're up to 30. So I'm a little concerned, but I trust you, and I know that you're going to go through this, and next year, we'll be in a much better spot, so...
Yeah, I definitely am going to go through this line by line to make sure that the encumbrances that we're closing, have all the invoices that we know of, you know?
Yeah.
Because this is up on the screen for the public, can you, like, describe, like, what's purchase services, what's property services? You can skip transportation and that.
So purchase services are mainly contracts for special ed. You know, like OTPT, you know, occupational therapists.
And that next document that you have, we're going to take a deeper dive on that.
This has the 300s.
Yeah. So you'll be able to see.
Top 10 of the 300s.
All right.
Just skip that one, then.
Property is like maintenance of buildings and rentals, just basically a lot of...
Porta-potties.
Sam stuff.
Sam stuff.
Those are expensive porta-potties.
Sam's clothes.
And then transportation insurance.
Yeah.
That speaks itself.
Yeah, that's all, tuition, yep. Supplies includes electricity, so that's why...
That's up.
...over a lot.
Yep.
Equipment is anything that's over 1,000. It's tangible.
And there wasn't a lot of money in equipment. Sam has really taken a hit on his equipment side.
I know. I apologize for everybody, Sam.
It's an official apology, it's not an actual apology.
And he still has money left over. He didn't get much to start with, and he still has a little left over.
So, so Jay's got one more sage thing to ask or, or comment on.
Okay.
I'm sorry for the, the death, that thousand cuts, but I just want to confirm, Susan, so the special appropriation that the legislature made for special education and the governor finally signed, was that received in the last fiscal year reflected in these numbers?
Yes. It was 193, 193,000, I believe, and it was put towards, I believe, special ed transportation. Do you remember, Rita?
I think it was, I thought it was put to the 300, I haven't had to double-check, but I thought it was put to the 300 special ed.
Okay. So it would go toward, it had to go towards special ed, and the excess costs that we've all, you know, experienced in special ed. And I think that was the governor's decision, because he was hearing from many superintendents that had had, you know, significant overages in special ed cost.
That's because they don't fund special ed the way they...
Because they don't fund it, no. The way they need to fund it.
And then, I mean, that was a special appropriation. We still have the pre-existing special education excess cost reimbursement. Did we qualify for any of that this year, or is that still pending?
I thought that goes to the town.
Over to all this special appropriation.
So the state funds for excess costs go directly to the town as a source of revenue. So we look at what has been received, and kind of predict for the future. And then that's a, you know, that's the revenue source. So when the check comes in, it basically is applied to the, to our budget in the way of revenue. And then there's additional funds. Go on, I'm...
So I know they do that for impact, but I thought there was still a subset of special ed excess costs that came to the board. Over to about the Impact Aid question, the two that were last year.
Well, I just want to clarify, Jay, that Impact Aid, the first payment, the median payment and the final payment, goes to the town, usually in the neighborhood of $4 million to $6 million as a revenue. But Impact Aid for military children with disabilities or severe disabilities comes directly, needs to come, it might go through the town, but then it is sent to our way. And we have to apply it.
Right.
Superintendent by law needs to put it towards special ed. So that's something we monitor really carefully, because my name is on it.
Yes, I'd be curious to know how much of that we've got, if anything, this year?
We have. We've received several payments. I can get you, we'll, we'll put together a little chart on Impact Aid, so you can see what's come in so far.
Wait, the checks are made to you?
Okay.
No, but they say I'm responsible for getting them to pay for special ed. Because the superintendent by law needs to.
Check being paid to Susan Austin.
I know. No, not to me.
Watch us take off on the internet somewhere. Yeah. All right.
Okay, we ready for the top 10? I love this idea. This was Beverly's conversation with us, Jay, because you were looking at this, and certainly, there could be a spreadsheet. It would have 130?
133 vendors. You paid out of that line. But I took the top 10, because it's the bulk of that.
Susan, did you get us a hand? Thank you, Rita.
And Kate, I do believe that that's the one who emailed us, didn't you?
That's the other tab.
That's the other tab.
Yeah, Kate, can you put up the other one that he sent, Jay sent? Please? Thank you.
And thank you for doing this.
And Susan, you know, what I am sad about this idea of looking at the 300s, because the bad is that this is the, the most discretionary accounts we have, right?
Well...
That salaries and benefits and everything, that everybody thinks, well, this is where we can save a lot of money. We can cut, you know, supplies and everything. And so I think this is very instructive to show you just how discretionary or not discretionary...
Not discretionary is the word.
...how these accounts really are, yeah.
These are really mostly...
Thank you for, for doing that.
Yeah, these are mostly special ed related, and by law, a child who has an IEP, we're required to provide services such as these, whether it's OTPT, whether it's learn support in, you know, providing some of these services. It says health services, but they're really student services. They might be health-related, but they're student services. We call it health, because we do fill out the Medicaid, and so the Medicaid then is reimbursed to the town. And I think that's also a source of revenue that's put in for the board. But our teachers do all the work to apply for the Medicaid, so it has to go in under health, because it is a health piece to the special ed program. But if you see the total, you know, out of the whole 300s of 2 million, what is our total for purchase, for 2,072,000, 72, yeah, thousand? The top 10 take out the majority, 1.942, or close to 2 million of the 2.07 million. So you can see that the top 10 really gets to the heart of the matter, and what we're spending it on, right? Because if there's 133, there's a lot of little things that add up to 72,000.
These, then I'll turn it over to other people for questions. Just, this 1.9 million, is that the actual or the budgeted?
That's the actual.
So that, so this for 1.7?
Yep.
So this ought to be compared with the 2.08?
Correct.
As opposed to the 2.07 figure?
Yeah, that's true.
Right.
Okay. I mean, it's a relatively minor...
Because we went over, right.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure, because I'm just like that. I take everything out on the fourth decimal place, which is crazy. Jen, any questions?
Does Rita want to explain this?
If I can.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The top two, like we said, health services, OTPT, it's BCBA, it's outsourcing those special ed services. The second one is social workers and speech pathologists that are typically outsourced. Obviously, the third one is pretty self-explanatory, it's the SRO, the officer at the Fitch High School and the middle school, um, the contract with the...
And this is only half their salary, right?
Well, it's a little more than half, I think, because we really have them for 10 months out of the year.
Okay. So a little more than half their salary, okay.
Legal services, and the next one is student, is student-related services for the reading solutions. Obviously, it's students' services for...
With dyslexia. Specialized, yeah.
Breeze line is the phones, services.
Do we ever, do we always keep Breeze line, or do we ever go out to bed, like the Frontier?
I, we did do that when we came up with Breeze line, to make, you know, some financial decisions to benefit us, some efficiencies. I guess if we were having a problem with Breeze line, we might have to go out to bed, but you wouldn't do your phone, it costs too much money to switch over and buy new phones and all that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Unless you're having a problem.
So New London is OTPT, speech and management services for that.
For our kids who go out to magnet schools.
Oh, magnet.
So the, we, we pay a magnet price at New London Learn, we pay a price at Ledger for the center, for the agricultural. But then, if you have special needs and you require other services, then those show up also on our bill.
I know that from Learn, they always say that. They charge the districts, you know, their services for OTPT, speech.
Yep.
Arbiter Pay is the officials, athletic officials during the year. And Fussin' O'Neill's HVAC testing.
Now, can I go back to the officials? Trust account, what is...
So it's a trust account. We send funds to a company called Arbiter Pay, and they pay the referees and all of the, all the referees.
So we don't have to write checks to them?
We don't write checks to them. A lot of districts use them, and that's why I know exactly who they are. So the referees will log in and put their time, and then the directors usually approve it, and that's how the referees get paid.
So do we ever get money back from them, if we don't use everything?
Well, it rolls over.
It rolls over, yeah.
Yeah, it's a trust account that, if, say, there's a balance, it rolls over from year to year. You can request a check back, but that's kind of, I guess, yeah. I'm not sure how much would be there for, you know...
At the end of the year.
...rotten. But I know I would keep an eye on it for when down the end of the year. It's not that much, we just roll it over to next year.
How do they determine how much we need to put in that account? Do they figure out, okay, you're going to have 50 basketball games, 20 football games, and each game's going to cost X amount of, you know?
Well, the referees are typically, their charges are public to the, to the athletic directors, and they will project, yeah, how many games, how many rats, but their rates are, are by their, I don't want to call it union, but it is, it's a union, right? You have to pay their, their going rate.
And we have to budget for it. So we try to budget as close as we can, for what we know is happening. The HVAC is interesting, Fussin' O'Neill, because as you may recall, legislation a year ago mandated, unfunded mandated, that we do these inspections. And I know, Sam, you have a system, I don't know if you want to talk about that, but... And I know, Sam, you have a system, I don't know if you want to talk about that, but going through our schools, we had three new schools that we didn't have to do. But you, you tell us because I don't want to get it wrong. Who, who got the services this year?
Northeast Academy and Captain Colmaski. So that was done during winter break last year. And the report was sent to the state for that because we, we're not eligible for any, any funds from the state regarding HVAC or construction projects if we don't do this, along with the Tools for Schools checklist that you may have seen on, on our website that each, each school does as well, so.
We have like a school safety cleanliness team who goes around and does inspections. I used to even have this years ago when I was a principal and we had it too.
Initially, the state said that you needed to do this for all your schools every year. And then they realized there aren't enough companies that can even service all the schools in the state of Connecticut. So we are now allowed to do one-fifth of, of our schools each year. So that's why we chose those, while we chose those two schools because we had some issues there anyways.
Yeah.
And we're hoping the town will help us with that. And then we'll pick two more schools of roughly the same size this year and do them again during winter break. Fitch High School will probably be done alone one year because of its size. And then the middle school and Charles Barnum might, might get done at the same time. I haven't, I haven't gotten that far yet. It'll go something along those lines. Jen, questions?
Oh, there's one more vendor.
Oh, there's one more, I'm sorry. You're right.
Digital back office is a network computer support for our network. I know the vendor because many order events use them.
Now, they do computer support.
Of the network. Typically, network services. I can look into it more if you need to. That's, that's the general description.
And now is this a company that you can go out to bid for or no, you just stick with this one company all the time?
That I would have to look into if it's a soul source because, like I said, I know that other, the order events, digital back office, so not, I'd have to talk to people about the actual services.
I guess if we don't have a problem with them.
Yeah.
We just leave it alone?
You don't want to mess with your network.
Yeah.
No. We already had it messed with.
Yeah, no.
By some bad actors, so.
Right, there's some bad actors out there.
I was just saying, if it goes down, he needs to.
Yeah, yeah.
Bring it back up.
Right.
So, go on. So I do have a question. So for like the first one, the million dollars, do we know how many hours of services we receive for that million?
Well, I know it's the BCBA's, but I don't, I'm not sure how many we have.
And OTPT also.
OTPT and, yeah, so all three of those services, you have occupational therapist, PT and BCBA's of the payroll. That are very hard to fill.
Right.
Yep.
And they all, each individual has a salary that would be equivalent to like a highest paid teacher or an administrator.
Yeah.
So.
That's the normal way.
Yeah.
So that's not a lot.
What'd you say?
I said, that's not a lot.
Well, it is.
I don't think we paid you, Ms. K.
150,000 could be, 150,000.
Yeah. No, 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 I mean, no, I mean like hours.
Oh.
Oh, hours.
Yeah.
I don't know if Learn has ever charged us by the hour.
Yeah, it would probably.
It would be by the person, yeah.
It'd be, it'd be salaried.
Yeah. And I know that our salaries, when we hire people and are able to get the OTPT and BCBA, they, they are really, that's more aligned with what I was saying, with the highest paid teacher or an administrator. I think we pay additional monies when it's outsourced.
Right.
It's more expensive. I, I know that a social worker that typically would make, let's say, highest paid teacher $100,000, but I've seen it where they've charged us almost double that if it's outsourced. So that's why we like to get, hire our own most of the time we're able to.
You want to tell people what BBCA stands for?
A behavioral, behavioral consultant who works with our paras, educators, our teachers with children who have IEP for behavioral needs. So, and they've got really specialized training, kind of under a health professional, a doctor.
They're certified.
And they're certified in this area, right.
They're very hard to come by.
Yeah. So going back to Jay and the 300 series, what on this list of vendors is discretionary and what is not discretionary in your opinion?
On this list, I don't think any of it is because most of it is legally binding if it's special ed, right?
Yeah.
Athletic, athletic officials, you can't stop the games.
Right.
Fussin O'Neal, we were given an unfunded mandate, we had to pay, we had to do this work, so we didn't have a choice.
There you go.
There he wants to chime in.
Jay has something to say.
Surprise, surprise. Yeah, the, the reason I asked for this was, you know, we all look at this and think, oh, you know, let's just cut a million dollars from supplies, right? And so, you know, what is in this account? And how can we weave this into the narrative of the budget form? And how can we explain some of these things in a little more detail? For example, if you were to put up there, Learn, define OT, PT, other services so that people can understand, you know, what students this is supporting and, and what services you're bundled into that. You know, the, the SRO is, is obvious and legal services and, but I think this is what the whole narrative concept in our budget, what was made for, for these kinds of explanations so that people, rather than just seeing the account number, understand what are, how students actually being served by the money and that information. And so that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see this kind of information with even fuller explanations of what each of these lines are in the narrative so it makes it easier for board members, the budget time, town officials and the public to know what, what they're paying for in our budget.
And Jay, I would even add to that, that this nifty little chart that has actuals from the year before is quite telling that when you see that there's only like a 72,000 differential in all the other, you know, hun, you know, 100 and 20 items, that, you know, it's pretty telling that this is pretty significant, that these are the ones that are the drivers of the 300s. And they, they don't have a lot of, they don't have wiggle room. They really are kind of mandated, they are needed. They're, you know, they're not discretionary. So I think if there's some way that we can weave in that message in the narrative and even put a chart in there to say, here's the natural chart of the top 10 that shows you what we've had to spend this on.
They're not discretionary, here's why.
Right.
We're told, we're told, we're told. One of the things people would zero in on is, oh, legal services, there go those lawyers again, $120,000, what are we paying the lawyers for? So maybe a breakdown of what's routine, how much was, you know, how much did we wind up paying them because we had a.
Negotiations.
drawn out negotiations.
Yeah.
You know, because, hey.
Special education is another big factor. Yeah, so you could almost do a top 10 of everything.
Board members, we should not be contacting the lawyer.
We should not be contacting the lawyer.
Independently, right? Clearance from the chair. Yeah, I'm just, it's one of those things, even though it's, it's, as a percentage, it's, it's not that high. People say, oh, wait, wait, I know what a lawyer does. Well, the law's legal service, what's that for? What are we paying the lawyers for? So I think a breakdown there. The rest of them, you know, breeze line, phones, got it. You know, Fussin O'Neal, HVC, got it. But the, you know, I mean, the legal services could be 120 bucks, people will still want to see what that's for.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I can't, 120 bucks, they may even ignore that, but, but yeah, they see six figures and they'll say the damn lawyers.
They're overpaid.
You know. I'm going to be honest.
Sometimes.
What I've seen, 119 is not that bad for a district this size. Because if you have negotiations going on, yeah, that could.
We have two this year.
Yeah.
I don't know how many negotiations you had last year.
We talked about.
We didn't have any last year.
We had the paras, we finished them with them.
Oh, we did?
Maybe we were already finished with them.
Yeah, I think that we already finished with them.
We just finished with the secretaries custodian. That had to have been last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We just finished.
Yeah.
Popular impressions, even if they're not completely based, are nothing to ignore. People will still say, yeah, well, because what we're doing is we're presenting numbers of proposed budget to the public and if, or representatives of the public, and you have to, you know, maintain their trust. So, yeah, do the tap, do the tap dance and say, yeah, just, just so you know, this is what it is. But you, what you can't do, because this, because people get, they're, they're, they're jaded now. You come in and say, oh, everything is mandatory, everything, we need everything. People are like, yeah, I heard that one before, we need everything. No, 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 I'm not buying that. So you've got to be solid on, no, really, for real, we're not just saying it's mandatory, we're not just saying it's necessary, this is why. The, the Learn one, at, at a million bucks, probably ought to be broken down as well. Yeah. What's that? How much is this? How much is that? So people, yeah, people have an idea. But yeah, it's just that, you know, those legal fees. People do get, because they think they know what lawyers do.
Yeah.
And it's also, it's also a question of, you know, people's reference point. The average person thinks $10,000 means what? $100,000 means what? A million dollars means what? We, we say, well, what's a million dollars? It's a lot of money, but after all, our budget is 90-some odd million dollars, so not a drop in the bucket, but not a driver necessarily. People still look at that and they go, I don't know what it's for, but it's too damn big. So they've got to be talked out of a different kind of a position when they see some of these numbers. Because they're thinking of their own expenses. I never spent a million dollars on anything, what the heck is this for?
No, that's why I was asking like how many hours, so.
Right.
You know what I mean? That's why I was asking like how many hours, so the context could be like how many students are being served with that 1 million, I guess, is what we can get to.
20% of our kids.
Yeah, which is how many kids.
Yeah.
But don't forget, one kid could be like $100,000.
Yeah, they marry.
Exactly. Exactly.
So how do we, with the Learn? I know the people who provide the services are paid salaries. How do, what does the bill to us, what's the tab to us look like?
It comes in monthly.
Is it, is it like, here's the charge for Jane Doe, John Doe? Or is it, here's our charge for the month's services, just many hours?
It should be split by, by student because if it's special ed services, you need to report it to Medicaid and it could be excess cost level.
Right.
Right? So basically more Medicaid, that it should be by student or this be, or this occupational therapist is at this school and for the whole year.
Yeah.
And this is her monthly bill.
And that's her responsibility to make sure that that's all accounted for. And it goes through a system and it gets tallied and then the town gets the check.
So if you had, let's say you could say, okay, we've got this million dollar, you know, actual expense for Learn, it's for these various things. Half of it was for special ed. It's all comprised of lots of, we can't give away student information, but it's comprised of X number of students who've received services that all together added up to about a half million dollars. And as far as the other half million dollars goes, well, that salary's paid to people who are paid to be at a school. And then people's minds will say, wait a minute, so we paid them, did they actually render any services? How many people receive actual PT or, or, or OT services at the schools? How do we know this person, not sitting there swatting flies all day? So we, we need stats too, not just, part of this is salaries paid to people who are here to fill a chair. Filling a chair and they did what? So if there's probably more detail there, though, and this is a lot of work, I get it.
There has to be a level of trust.
There has to be.
And, and that this is all per child's IEP. So we're held accountable by law to render these services as they're prescribed on this document called Individual Education.
If, if all of the million, and I know we're supposed to be on trust, but we are talking about, people have said, hey, you know, isn't this discretionary? What's all this money for? Where's it all going? Okay? Again, sticking with the Learn one. If all or most of this is per student, you say, look, we can't get into the details, but X number of students have been served by this and this is what the grand tally is, that's what it go, that's what. But if we're saying that some of this is, we're billed by student basically, and some of this is, well, it isn't by student, it's just by person providing service. We require their presence and they're here. It still doesn't answer the question of, well, did they do anything? Within, I'm going to give you an example. In the case of teachers, it's presumed that if we have a teacher, we're paying the teacher, nobody's going to say, really? How many students did they serve? It's presumed that they're, if you have a teacher, that they have classrooms full of kids. And then the argument is, well, how many kids do they have? Are they 11 kids, 20 kids, 25 kids? Okay. But it's presumed that they're teaching kids. But if you say, well, we have this professional on, 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 on call at the school. Okay, all right. Again, with a school nurse, it's, people are happy to presume that people will go to the school nurse because we've all had that experience. I'm talking my generation, so what, what were we exposed to? The teachers, the school nurse, the occasional administrator you'd run into. Okay? When you start telling people, well, we've got therapists, we've got this, we've got that, we've got people with caseloads, all right? Again, from the common point of view, what are they doing? Because if we're not billed by student for some of these other services, but we're billed by, this is the person's salary because they're here, we probably should fill in the blank because the people may not make that inference of, well, we have somebody who's there for occupational therapy, I'm just going to presume that they're actually providing the occupational therapy. Put it to bed by saying, look, we have a person who, you know, we have people who provide OTPT services and this is how many people they've actually served. Because otherwise you're saying, well, we pay them their salaries. How do I know they actually? We know that they've dealt with people, but just that extra little, yep, and there were 100 kids that were, you know, served by, or something like that. I don't know how much work it is to put that together. Again, not a tally of how many kids, the final tally, 100 kids, 50 kids, 250 kids, whatever it is.
Well, it wouldn't be work for them, it'd be work for Learn. Because when our kids go to Learn, they would have to keep a record of, okay, this Grotton kid went to PT and they would have to keep those records for us. And I, I don't know if they do it all.
So they could tally and say, yes, we're charging you this and this is how many clients, however they refer to it, or the kids or whatever, how they refer to it. And you don't think that that's actually reasonable to ask Learn?
I'm not suggesting that it is. I don't know what she would say to me.
Okay.
Well, they need to submit her billing anyway, right? Like.
But they, but they bill for the person, they don't bill for the kid.
Rita might have something to say.
Yeah, I have to, I would have to look at, I, to be honest, I haven't looked at the invoices from Learn of this million dollars. And let me look at those, you know, the big purchase orders and see, is this for a person and how many students it, or is this for a certain kid?
Right.
And break that out.
I would say it could be for, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think working, I can work with Denise to figure that out.
Denise may know.
And she may know. Yeah, I could, she may know, like, oh, this is.
Again, we're talking about the narrative, this is, this is about the kids, working backwards from the kids that comes to a million bucks, but we start with the kids and work back.
How could it be for a person now? Well, I mean, because the, so I'm a, I'm a speech pathologist, I'm not only working with a Grotton kid, I'm working with maybe five other kids.
Oh, I know, that's what I was getting at, that, what I heard, this is where, where Oh, I know, that's what I was getting at, that, what I heard, this is where, where I, I took off. What I heard was that some of the million dollars is by kid, that we get a, you know, that we get a, a report from LEARN that says, you know, here are the kids that we serve for medic, for, for billing purposes, for their, you know, for their insurance. So we could tally that up and say, well, this is how many kids this month, this is how many kids this quarter per year. But then I also heard that some of the, some of this is, we're paying for people's salaries. So we have a com, it sounded like a combination of, we're paying per kid and then we're paying per professional. Kids is understandable. When you're paying for the professional, I'm just saying, there's a little bit of a gas gap in there where people might say, well, okay, we're paying for the professional, what did they do? I don't know what, exactly what they did, but how many people did they serve? Or were they just paid to sit there and wait for somebody to walk in the door?
I've never seen a lot of sitting in schools.
No, oh, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, not everybody knows what we do.
Right, right.
Yeah. Don't get scared, this is far like we're thinking ahead for the budget book, so don't think you need to have this like every month. This is like when the budget book is presented, um, just to give you some context. It was sometimes just numbers and then we would go through and like have tons of meetings to try to identify what's in those. So, um, I think Dean, what we're getting at is like when the budget book is presented and there is a budget for like $2 million, it's just showing things like this, which would help and it would just make life easier.
Yeah, we have a little narrative box that helps explain.
Yeah, don't expect to do it like the next time maybe, yeah, yeah, no. Yeah.
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 I just hit one.
That's one.
Okay.
Jay, your turn. Anything?
Well, I just want to say thank you for coming up with this, this, uh, really supports what I was hoping to get at. And I think once we start to amplify some of these lines, it will be very instructive for everybody. So thank you for the work and, um, we look forward to, to working with you.
Welcome, thanks.
Instruction's what we do.
Jay, do you have a series for next month?
Next? Should we just go down the line or?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, please, go down, go down the line. I specifically skip salaries and benefits, just, you know, for pretty obvious reasons, but yeah, we, if we just go to the next series. As time permits.
As time permits.
The next time would be property services, I guess.
As time goes by.
Top 10. It's gonna be like David Letterman Show.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you, Rita, I know you, you need to hit the road, so.
Oh, questions, I.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Is that the first meeting of the parents of the community?
You may be, you may be excused.
We're harmless.
Jay said that, we're harmless.
We're harmless.
Well, we're toothless is what it is. We can be harmful when we have no teeth.
Have a good night.
All right. It says here Director of Building and Grounds.
What's that?
I think that's Sam.
Transportation and Food Services, he wears lots of hats.
Yeah, so I guess the first topic is Mary Morrison facility.
Tell us all about it.
I don't know exactly what you're looking for, however, we have three programs there, now our offices there, but we have food services there in that building. ECAT, which is Early Childhood Assessment Team. They're not there full-time, they're there when they need to be there, which is, um, before school starts.
Well, they are often also in the building, so they do go out to the schools and they do PPTs, but that's kind of their home base.
Yeah, that's their home base, okay. And, and then we have the Treehouse office there. Uh, so the Treehouse Director and his assistants are there when they're not out at the schools as well.
You may want to talk about how we had a fire marshal come out, because there was a question about the robotics team, maybe shifting its homestead from Pleasant Valley to Mary Morrison at one point. And we got news that we needed a sprinkler system. Um, I did, we did talk to John Burt today and he said that they don't really have to be out till November 1st, so we have a little more time to really organize. And we'll be talking about the manufacturing center in a bit, but that's also a space that could be viable space.
Are you skipping down to?
No, I'm just saying that, I mentioned the robotics team, so. But anyways, you want to talk a little bit about the fire chiefs and what we were, what was recommended for Mary Morrison to bring it up to code for robotics?
Well, if you, if you're gonna have robotics there, you need to have sprinklers in the building, that's, that's his determination. So Chris Jenkins, who's one of the, uh, program mentors.
Coaches, yeah.
Or coach.
Yep.
Is, um, has shared with me a couple of sites to look at for these, um, sort of portable sprinkler systems, which are, um, actually hung on the wall. So it still needs to be determined, um, how many of those we would need in the space and in what spaces they would be needed. So I'm looking into that, I just got that yesterday, I've been looking at it. And I will be sharing that with the fire marshal to see if he thinks that this would be, or if he would agree that this would satisfy the sprinkler issue at the school. So, um, that I'm hoping to get to in the next couple of weeks, at the latest, to the fire marshal, see, see where we stand. In addition to that, we have a lot of, um, one of the things he said about the building is he, he considers it more of a warehouse than, than anything else this time, because when we closed down, um, a couple of schools, we moved a lot of the desks and file cabinets, all those things into the empty classrooms in that building. So what we are going to be doing is, um, making a list of the items that we believe are obsolete. We'll share them with Susan, she can then declare them obsolete and we can dispose of them. Any other items that are in there that are of value, that we're not going to be using in the school system, we would have to contact the, uh, the town purchasing agent and he would, uh, put those things up for auction. If they went during the auction, uh, those persons would be responsible for coming over and picking them up. And if they didn't go in the auction after that, then they could be disposed of as well, so. That's the next thing that we're working on at Mary Morrison.
How often do you have these auctions? Do you have them whenever needed or are they scheduled?
Yeah, he does it whenever, they, they'll put them up, it, it's all on, on, on the web, so it's all.
Oh, okay.
So they don't actually come to the building. They put them up in different school systems. Chance to take a look at, see if there's anything in there, or other businesses would look on them. I think there's some professionals actually just, uh, look at, look at sites like our site to see if there's auctions, or, or the town site to see if there's auctions going on all the time and, um, helping out other businesses and districts, finding materials that, that are up for auction and, and of value to them, so. Uh, we'll be sharing that with the, uh, purchasing agent shortly. The second item is the.
Can I, can I jump back to the person?
Yeah, yep.
Now, like we're talking about, maybe the vision for Susan, for the school district is maybe opening up Mary Morrison for early childhood center. What would be the process for doing that? I mean, you don't have to have the details, but what's the process?
Yeah, we, we have to contact the State Department of Education, have their early childhood, um, team or group come down and take a look at the building and tell us what we would have to do to upgrade it in order to make it, um, acceptable as an early childhood center. You, you probably remember before we closed Clodchester School, um, we, we moved some early childhood programs over there. And they were in the, in the section that actually faces Newtown Road or Route 117. And if you look at it, it's pretty high up. There's a, there's a basement wall, it's about seven foot high, and then the, the building was above that. And, um, we had to have them come down at that time and, and take a look at it, make sure that it was acceptable to have them, which was essentially on a second level, although it was the first floor of the building. So we had to do, um, we had to provide them with a plan on how the kids would get out of there in an emergency, that sort of thing.
And each of those, I think you've been over there, so you've seen that there's a lot, about five or six classrooms that have the little lavatories right in the classroom. And, um, I think there's multiple access points for them. There's also a little playground out there, but I, I heard that that might need to have a, you know, be redone.
Oh, it's gotta be cleaned up for one thing, that's.
Is it free to have the state come and look at it? So like as, like, um, we can have them come in, assess it, um, and then just have it in our back pocket so that if we do pull the trigger, we sort of know what we need to do, um, future planning wise, um, for that space?
So we've been in communication with the Department of Early Childhood. As a matter of fact, Beverly came in and we were putting together a grant that would, um, allow us in the next couple of years to add eight classrooms. And there's a construction piece to it that would have, you know, us be able to upgrade the construction at nearly about a million dollars for the next couple of years. And then also to service the classrooms and provide the teaching staff. So I'm not saying we're gonna get it, but we did make contact with the Office of Early Childhood.
I was gonna pull on that shade, but it's already done.
I know.
It's in your face.
And Anne Marie's had a lot of experience with this in East Hartford, um, and some of these grants continue through. So it's at least worth, we, the deadline was tomorrow, so we went ahead and submitted the, you know, the paperwork that needed to have.
But I think Jen is asking, if the state, can the state come down for free?
Yeah, I, well, I, I do say that we're in contact and, and Anne Marie knows some people that she can, you know, ask to come down.
And is it free?
Yeah, our State Department's always.
That's what I want to know.
The last time, last time I had them come down at Clodchester, they didn't send me a bill for.
No.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so let's, let's have them come down, so we sort of know, and then once they give us an assessment, then maybe we have the fire, you know, marshal come back or, you know, come back in again and like assess the entire space. I mean, if they won't let the robotics team in because there's no sprinklers, I'm a little concerned about like what else may, we may need to do to get those rooms up.
I'm contacting the state.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, let's get that, right, the planner.
Yeah, Jen's saying, let's get the, if the state can come down sooner than later.
Yeah, because you don't, you, like, you've been saying, um, and I don't know, maybe you have more information, we don't even know, like, if we suddenly get an influx of students, like, where are we gonna put them? How fast is the turnaround to get the school back up and running? I mean, don't just look at it for the early childhood center, but look at it for, hey, if we need to open a school with like 300, 400 students, what will it take to get the school back up and running? I guess that's.
I'm gonna guess.
A lot?
That it's going to be something that has to go out, that's a, a, a capital project that's gonna have to go out, there's gonna be a lot of money, it's gonna be in the seven figures. Is the building essentially sound? Leave aside its use as a school. Structurally sound, the roof does not leak or doesn't leak badly, we have a furnace in there, we actually have air handling, I mean, what's, what's?
We, we repair the roof on a regular basis.
Okay.
Because we still.
The structure itself is good.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
The floor tiles were abated, um, 10 or 11 years ago.
Right.
Doesn't mean there isn't some of that A word behind walls somewhere or something, but it's not, not, not in spaces that I'm aware of.
But if we don't go after the, we don't go behind the walls, then we're good.
Yeah.
So as a building, it's good.
So the plan to make it an early childhood, what that would do is it would alleviate those, you know, classrooms that are in both Mystic River and in Thames River. And that could give you like four to five classrooms in each, that then could be used for kids in K through 5. So that would be kind of the first step. Should we get boatloads and, you know, apartments filled? We might also, the town may want to contemplate what to do with Charles Barnum. And we talked about even using the plans that already exist from Mystic River, Thames River, to build one of those buildings on the field. And then they would create the fields and the parking spaces where the building is now, kind of like what we did with West Side and Cudler.
Yeah.
But that's, that's a long term, and that's only if, you know, if this housing market just escalates, because now we do have some affordable housing and, and maybe not so affordable housing.
That was the thing, we have the affordable house.
Well, the apartments, I guess.
No such thing.
Where is that? Where is that, Susan?
I think the bottom line is if we, if we get so many kids that we can't account, that we can't accommodate them right now.
Right.
But we, we don't have the ability to just say, well, we'll have everything ready in six months. It's a year's thing. We will, we will not be able to accommodate them. If enough kids show up, we do not have the ability to accommodate them. This, this is a question of turning on the lights and mopping the floors and clearing out the cobwebs.
Yeah, we shouldn't do it this next year, so this, in this two-year plan, um, to build this thing, the first year is really a planning year and it's doing all these things that you're saying. Having someone investigate what's it gonna take, what kind of construction is needed, and then, you know, to get them in the building the following year.
Meaning like 2027? I don't know, I think you might need to work faster than a year.
Well, it's gonna have to go out to a referendum probably, it's a big enough number. I mean, if the state comes in and it's like, yeah, it's only a couple hundred dollars worth of work.
And if they give us this $2 million grant, that would help us.
Yeah, but I'm envisioning sort of a, an expense that would rise to the level of a referendum.
Right.
Small referendum, but a referendum nevertheless, which then has its own life. You know, winds up going out, you know, end of November and we're all living, whatever year that would be. So I'm thinking of a, of a sort of a disjointed process. I mean, ideally what we would do as a town is say, to guard against the advent, or take care of the advent of a sudden influx of enough kids that we can't handle, we should determine right now, we have a plan, we have the money in place, we're gonna rehab Mary Morrison, we put up the sign that says, open for business for the early childhood or just as a, you know, K through 5 elementary school or whatever, and we wait for the kids to show up. That's how you're actually prepared, so when the kids show up, you're ready to go. But that's not gonna happen.
But we should.
That's not gonna happen.
Well, we're starting to think about it.
No, no, I know, no, no, no.
Have those conversations to keep our eye on it.
I mean, what, think of the sales job you're doing.
I think you have another invitation to go out to someone that could help us understand this from the town, who might know what the, um, a little more about enrollment.
Yeah, John Reiner. I have invited him to come to a town meeting. But I want to get back to my, because you all started talking. So the first one was the state comes down, what's, what's the next step after that, Sam? I'm a step person. So the first step was if the state comes down, looks at the building, tells us blah, blah, blah.
Well, they would tell us what to do.
Okay. And then what do you do, hire architect, hire what it is?
It depends upon how, how, how in-depth they, how much, how much of a change that we would need to make in order to open it up for that, for those purposes.
Okay.
You know, if they tell us that we need to, that, that the building is, is acceptable the way it is, you need to upgrade the playground some and add some exterior doors to classrooms that are on the upper levels so that kids have, uh, direct access out of the classroom too possibly. Well, maybe those could be done, may not even take a CIP. Although not cheap, but maybe we could do those. So it depends on exactly what they tell us.
Okay. Do you have any gut feeling about the building?
Do I have any what?
Gut feeling about what needs to be done?
About what they would ask for?
Yeah.
Not really.
And I think we, I, I don't know, maybe this is a town thing, Dean, you being a former town council, like, um, we need to decide what's the break even point where we stop investing in Mary Morrison and consider building a new building in that section of town, right? I, I, I don't know who makes that decision.
Well, that's, that's driven a lot by what the state's willing to reimburse you for, what percentage. And so far they've, you know, they seem to be more generous with a new school than with a rehab.
Yeah, so let's, let's, yeah.
Jay has his hand up just. Jay, you're on.
Yeah, so everybody may, yeah, everybody may recall, and, um, somebody's reminded me actually that, um, one of the major issues pending Mary Morrison, the courts closed and the fact that it probably doesn't need any of the current codes, is the parking lot. We had a CIP, I believe, to completely redo that. And I'm kind of curious, I, I haven't been over there myself lately, you know, how that's holding up. And I'm trying to recall how much of it had to do with actual, uh, physical deterioration of the lot and how much of it just had to do with the fact that the traffic flow had become unmanageable, given the number of, of parents who were dropping off. But either way, I know that was a major issue and, and we were, we were prepared to go to a CIP, we kept the school open. to go to a CIP, we kept the school open. And how is that gonna affect, you know, using it as a park?
Yeah, so um I'm not a, I, I, I haven't been involved in any CIP requests for the parking lot at Mary Morrison School. So that was prior to my arrival eleven years ago, I think.
But how is it holding up physically?
It's not, it's not a gravel lot yet.
Yeah, it wasn't bad.
I think we were parking some buses on it at one point.
When they were selling their buses, the buses were parked.
They need a little repair, but it wasn't bad.
Yeah.
Didn't have potholes or anything.
No, it does not look new. Let's put it.
It's, it's not new, uh, could probably need some upgrade of some sort. Whether you could oil it or something, maybe?
Weed whacking and chip seal.
Could repave it.
Yeah, you repave it, but.
Well, I think, you know, we heard from John Burt and some of the town councillors about the potential of having that field back there and cleaning that up. And in seeing the, the playground out front, it gets wet, but I think it's a little bit more, you know, in line. But it, it might be that they'll do a field and also a playground so that the community will have that area. And then if we were to be able to do this and have some students in the building, that would also be a plus for that too, for a school. So either way, it could be a benefit, I think.
I'm talking about John Burt. When do you think you all will start working on the memorandum? I know you're away next week, but.
I have it as, I have it on my to-do list.
He's got it on his to-do. It's gonna help us.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna write it, so we perhaps.
That's why, that's why we need you, Dean.
Thank you, Dean.
That's why I get paid the big bucks.
Yeah.
So um I'll just ask Siri, no, 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 wait, I'll ask ChatGPT, write it. I'll bet you all get one.
Yeah, I bet you you will too.
You will.
I'm gonna try that when I go home. Jen, any questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Jay, any questions?
Nothing for it.
Hearing none. Manufacturing Center at Fitch High School. Well, what about, come on, all right, get ahead. Have any questions?
No, no.
Jesus.
A bit like the step child.
Yeah, so the manufacturing center at Fitch High School, they had a meeting last week, I believe. It could have been ten days ago.
Could have been ten days.
And um we are, uh, my department is in the process of moving stuff. In order to do that, there are uh two other spaces that I need to clean out to get the stuff out of that garage. So if you, we have a, a, a storage facility at Wells Road, which is um in the old Mystic section of town, over where the tennis club used to be. Off of Route one eighty-four, uh, past, it's, it's down past uh our office and past the Colonel Edger Highway and the uh gas station, everything down there, so.
Behind Ken's appliances?
If anybody remembers Ken's appliance, man, that's right, Ken Barber.
Yeah.
And um so uh we, we're still in the process of moving stuff out of there in order to make room for some of the stuff that we're bringing down to there from the garage. So it's a, uh, we're moving a lot of chess pieces around. And it's taken longer than I hoped, but they're working feverishly on it. In the meantime, there's a consultant, Susan.
Yes.
Want to mention that?
We had taken a trip last, two summers ago maybe, to Coventry, Rhode Island. And there is, was an E, um, a CTE coordinator, um, director for the town that had worked with EB um to create their own manufacturing center there in Rhode Island and working with Electric Boat. So she has retired and is now consulting. So we've been in conversation with her to really look at the space and to come up with a phased-in plan for a year of how we can convert this into this manufacturing center. EB will work with us um and we will, you know, they'll help us secure grants like they did in Coventry. We also have a Perkins grant that we could also earmark for, you know, the next couple of years, like we've done for culinary. So, you know, it, it's very exciting. It would be really a machine shop, and Sam knows more about this than I do, but we don't have that particular part of manufacturing machinery um in the southeastern Connecticut. So EB was really looking forward to having, you know, Fitch be kind of on the hill to provide that. And I think they could use it in the summertime and they can use it really for training too in the evening. So um we're, you know, as soon as they get more information, I think we have a meeting coming up soon and I'll have more information. But we also looked at this as a space for teaching robotics during the school day. So we could have classes where kids learn robotics and we could potentially bring our robotics team home. We need to find space for them to have their um kind of a part of a gym floor so that they can actually do their practice um with the robot. But we certainly have a wood shop and we have um, you know, the three-bay garage for the um auto shop. We've talked about potentially providing containers so that Sam can have a space right there on the campus for smaller, you know, small, um, snow blowers or.
We have s- snow blow, it, all the snow removing equipment is in that building.
So we need to find a spot. But there is the CIP to help us with the, the planning, the architectural plans, and also maybe to clean out that space and get it ready.
Where's the space again?
It's, I haven't taken you for a walkthrough in the auto shop? And the, we went with John Burt and the town. We went with really a nice big group this year. I think I put it in board notes and looked at the space and I had some pictures. It's pretty large and what, what they did with Coventry is they built lofts. So they had instructional places and machinery on these lofts. So then it gives you more floor space. So when I saw that, I thought about the robotics team cuz you could have the floor space, but then these lofts could have for the kids to be working and, you know, doing some of the machine work. So um what they've used in the past has been everything from a whole gym to a half gym. And when they were in um the high school prior, um, they used space, but they had to always reconfigure the space to get it. And I think that was a little inconvenient. So.
So.
They had to set up and take down each night.
Yeah, so um I'm just trying to understand. So if um that space, um, let's say EB invests and makes it into a machine shop, right? I'm assuming they're gonna have like large equipment there to do the pressing, the molding, whatever it may, you do for a machine shop, right? So I, I guess I don't see where you think there's gonna be space for the robotics to like function in that building.
Some of those machines are the same machines that.
That the robotics use.
Oh, that they use, okay.
And then there's also a wood shop. So the wood shop also has garage doors. So you have, and the space isn't too far apart. I mean, it's a little bit.
It's okay.
But it's walk, walking distance.
Is it possible, Sam, that, you know, you could take us like one afternoon, like four, five, when Dean gets off for work and take us to look at?
Yeah, we could look at it. Yeah.
I appreciate it.
And if I get a walkthrough with EB again, cuz they, they usually come out in the summer, I can let you know and you can come with us too.
Jay.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing, whether we could tour the space. I, I really don't recall how large that is. Do you, you roughly know the square footage, Sam, of the two different spaces?
Sixty by eighty, roughly.
That's not big at all.
Okay, that's the, that's the garage. And then you said there's a, the wood shop space is still vacant?
Uh, well, it's, it's not vacant. It has equipment and everything in it. But um they haven't been, they haven't been using it for a while.
No, they had, they had a class this year. I don't know how many kids took the class, but they had a class in there.
Oh, that's interesting. But yeah, I, I um would like to walk in as well and get a sense. So you're, you know, when you're talking about possibly shared space and you're talking about do, putting some kind of partition or, or literally shared space.
No, it could be shared space. I mean, we would figure out, you know, how to secure the robot and everything. Well, you know, if there were classes in session, but. And I know that Sherry Ficus, who's on, is one of our coaches and she's done a walkthrough, but it might be good to, you know, invite the coaches when we do our walk and maybe invite EB just to, and, and this, you know, consultant, to see, you know, how doable is this? How, how could we get it done? So.
So Susan, I don't mean to be indicative or like focusing in on it, but when EB came prior, were they okay? Did they know your plans of putting the robotics in, in the machine shop? Okay, perfect.
Jay, you still have your hand up?
Yeah, so um, you know, um, I, I spoke to Ian about this a little bit and um if we're going to be doing a walk of space over at Fitch, it might be interesting to, to see the existing setup of PV. I don't know how many of you have seen uh that space so we get a better idea of what, you know, what it looks like now and how, you know, that would fit into this new space. I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around having both of these programs, you know, in the same space. I really would need to see it.
So the space at PV, as you know, we have to have it shut down by November first. So it's not even an option. The Mary Morrison space could be with the right, um, you know, okay from the fire department and sprinkler system, but I don't know how permanent that's gonna be, just in case we had to open that school. So thinking long-term, how do we make sure we get into a space that works for our kids in the robotics team so that they can have some sustainability and have everything they need? And there, there's just some nice synergy about being able to take a course in robotics during the school day and then be able to be on a team with robotics in the evening, afternoon.
I'm going to guess that it's probably going to be board policy. And ultimately, we'll have to hear from people who are actually involved in this activity. But I don't think it's too much of a stretch to say that it probably ought to be board policy that we find a permanent home for the robotics team on the Fitch campus.
Agreed.
Well, I agree, that's the safest place, you know, they have them right there.
Work backwards from there. What do they need? Where do we make the space? I mean, obviously, if they require like a construction of a giant mausoleum or something like that, that, we, we want to be reasonable about it, of course. But uh for now, it just seems like it's a make-do situation. Maybe they're perfectly happy at Pleasant Valley. Maybe they're, maybe perfectly happy at Mary Morrison.
But they can't, yeah.
My guess is that they'd like to come home.
Yeah.
It is, it is the aluminum Falcons after all. Despite the fact that my, my daughter did not like the fact that the middle school mascot is also a Falcon. Uh, I recognize that there's gonna be some, some, some synergy there. Not synergy, but some cooperation there, some association there as well.
Well, how about if I do, I take this as a to-do item to schedule kind of a walkthrough at Pleasant Valley and then at the high school, find out a date that works for everybody, including the coaches and any board member that wants to come for the walk. And we can look at the spaces and maybe bring the consultant who really has developed space and, you know, maybe, uh, you know, someone from EB who understands what the needs might be.
Jay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great idea, Susan. I um, I'm, I'm having a hard time envisioning all of this. And so I think that'd be great, that, just so anybody who's interested can come and, and, you know, uh, and hear from those folks who were leading the program about what their needs are and, and make sure this is all gonna work.
And that's why I don't know why we need to visit Pleasant Valley cuz the coaches will be there to tell us what they need.
Well, that's true. I think he was just, I, Jay, were you just saying just to envision what it looks like now?
They can help us.
Yeah, my idea was, and I've been there, you know, years ago.
Yeah, me too.
To the Pleasant Valley site. I, I, I don't have photographed the members of it. I think it would be helpful to get us into, you know, what the setup, you know, looks like and then see what we're proposing to move it and to hear from all the stakeholders and to get their input on it, along with all the directors and board members.
Well, I, I'm for that, but I don't see the purpose of viewing Pleasant Valley because um, um, the coaches will know it, what the setup of Pleasant Valley is when we go up to um the high school. So they could tell. Cuz then we're gonna go to Pleasant Valley, everybody's gonna get in their car and drive up to the high school. That seems like too much. So the coaches will be there, so they, they'll know if it's gonna work or not, Jay. I mean, we're gonna be out of Pleasant Valley, so it's gonna have to make it work somewhere. So we're gonna rely on the coaches to help us out with that.
I, I would just like to be able to envision what, um, what it looks like and how much space it takes up and, and even what constraints they're already experiencing in Pleasant Valley, uh, perhaps.
Yeah.
Maybe that isn't the ideal situation to begin with and explain what the challenges are. Anyway.
Right, I'm not against that. They, they could tell us that, Jay.
Board members won't be required to go, won't be required to come.
In my opinion, it's not critical. I mean, is it nice? Sure, probably. I don't think it's the most critical component of the, this exploration. Yeah, cuz you're right, this come, come November, it's not gonna be.
It's a, it's a new point.
Yeah. I, I just don't, I feel like, um, this too, using the word, the term too loosely, vagabonds. I just don't want them wandering around anymore. It's like, well, we happen to have space here and we happen to have a corner over there and it's back to the broom closet with.
They've got too much stuff to keep moving. I feel the same way with my home moves.
Right.
I just wanna get.
They need to find permanent space.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, is, is this what we're, is this, I don't wanna focus too much on, you know, hey, we're cleaning out the garage to make a manufacturing space. That's, let's see if robotics will fit in there. I don't know if we have any other options. I don't know if there are better options than that, but I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But so now, we're talking about that as though that seems like that'll probably be the place to go. As long as everything lines up, there's enough space and everybody's chill with it. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, is that what we're saying, that, that will be a permanent stop for them? Okay.
Well, we, we have those two pretty large spaces. So um unless Matt's hiding out on us, any other spaces? We have those multiple gymnasiums, but they're usually used. So.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that. Are we still using the small gym? For like all, all in wrestling, like all of those same sports from beyonds?
Right, right.
Well. You know, it's, I, I look at that and I'm thinking, all right, I, I don't know how critical, how critically packed all the schedules are for sports. This is also an extracurricular activity of the school, something the school's actually known for too. I think it should be able to vie for that space the same way as any other uh activity. It just happens to not be volleyball or whatever. It's not a sport. But I think it should be able to vie for the space just the same. So, yeah, I don't presume that they are, you know, everybody else is using it and so, you know, robotics can't go there. I think, let, let's just see if there's space for everybody in there without prioritizing volleyball over robotics or vice versa.
I think Sherry and Chris can probably weigh in on this, but when, um, just setting up the field, the practice field when they get this robot built, um, at Pleasant Valley, they're able to set it up in that gym and leave it there.
Leave it there.
If you're at the high school, um, you're not gonna be able to leave it.
Yeah.
Well, they, they would set it up, take it down. I mean, that's what they were doing for years there.
That must have been a pain in the neck.
So maybe it's not the optimal move. I don't know.
Well, some, and there's some wide hallways, but you, same thing. You'd have to set it up and take it down.
All right.
Going for a tour.
Maybe we can set up um the walkthrough like in the middle of August sometime?
I, I will reach out. I'll, I'll, I'll get back to everybody. And I'll make sure Sherry and Chris, it works in their schedule and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we can let board members know.
Okay.
So, cuz I know there's a great interest in this from everybody. But we do have a little bit more time. I hope everybody heard that. John Burke gave me the official, November 1st, so we got a little time, but we do want to get them settled in before it's team time.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
One last question, at least for me.
Good.
If we, I know Sam, you're in the process of cleaning out the space, is it possible that it would be clean enough so that they could start off the school year there in like that space that you're cleaning out at Pitch?
I don't know. I still have to find a space for the groundskeeper who has all of his equipment in there as well, so.
Who's the groundskeeper?
Hector.
That's someone we employ?
Yes.
So there is the possibility, though, and Sam and I have talked about this, getting a container to put on the property, and we have multiple containers, but I think they're all filled. Is that right? So. And I actually took a picture. I found one, a garage with three bays, a container garage that was put by someone's house, and Sam said he's already seen those. I was like so excited. I said, oh, there is a garage container.
I've already put one at Groton Middle School previously.
Yeah.
We need to purge. I just hear container, storage space, blah blah.
Moving it from one spot to the other spot.
Exactly.
Ah, taking apart.
So it's a possibility that they might be able to go into the new space.
In September, maybe?
In September, possibility.
I know they gave us till November, but if we.
It's all about when somebody's going to start doing the construction of this new machine shop as well, so. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to.
Oh, so it's not used?
Just because we're cleaning it out, you're not bringing the machines in, you know.
Oh, no, I was just thinking like.
Electric work, all kinds of work that needs to be done in order to set that stuff up.
Oh, I was just thinking that they would have a space, like, so that they could call it home even before, because let's say, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but let's say this thing fails and like EB doesn't move forward, so now we have this clean space, right? But, you know what I mean, like?
I think they're pretty committed, though.
No, no, I'm just saying, but like I want us to have a plan that we can sort of work to for robotics, whether EB goes or not, and you know, you're pretty much sure that they will, so, but if we could get them in there, you know, before school starts, that would just be nice, right? Like especially for the seniors and stuff, so that they have home, you know, Falcon pride.
Sherri Ficus has her mic unmuted. I'm going to take from that that she's dying to say something. Am I right? Sherri?
I don't think they're part of the forum.
Well, no, but they're here. I just saw the, you know, the mic unmuted, and I thought maybe she could offer a thought, a thought. I don't want a full discussion necessarily.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep.
Oh, yes, I was unmuted, but I wasn't sure if I was allowed to speak at this.
I'll recognize you for, because we're on your topic. I don't want a whole, just so you know, I don't want a whole giant, you know, hour-long thing, because we're just beginning the process, but I just, I was, I had a hunch that I saw your mic unmuted. I see your face now, and I'm thinking, I bet she's dying to say something.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you all for bringing us to an agenda. I really appreciate it. I do have some concerns with a shared space at the high school. I think, you know, for service and safety concerns with a shared space, we have, you know, industrial-sized machines, Vansaws, CNC machines that require training and direct supervision and use. I may just even worry about the possibility of a student or somebody accidentally bumping into a machine and turning it on or something. And the team has invested a great deal in equipment and electronics through grants and sponsors and student-led fundraising. So I also, you know, question that if we're in a shared space, who would be responsible if something were to get broken or misplaced? I just see it being difficult to maintain accountability over our equipment and supplies. And then just, it's important to be functional. We operate on an intensive six-to-eight week build season from January, the human release early January to March, so we are there five, six days a week. And although we are very good at keeping our space clean and organized, it's one of my top keys, we spend the last 10 minutes of our morning kind of cleaning up our area. However, students are working on some systems that could be, you know, days-long projects, weeks-long projects, so it's not realistic for them to clean up everything. There might be partially assembled robots, some systems out on the work benches and tables, and also the potential of damage if they have to keep moving these very delicate carts back and forth to clean up. I see that as being an issue, and the fact of having that field, it's not something that we can easily break down and set up. So I'm just not seeing this working out as a shared space. I would love to be at the high school. We would love to be home. That would be ideal. I just, I don't see it working out if this were to be shared with classrooms.
Rev.
If it's not at the high school and it's at Mary Morrison, do most of your students drive there, or do they get, how's the transportation for them to participate in the robotics team?
Yeah, so some of our students drive, who are licensed, drive, and then the other students get ride from their parents. So our hours are because we are, a lot of our mentors are volunteers, and they also have day jobs. So we typically meet between 5:30 and 6:00 till like 9:00, so it's, you know, not for work hours. So we don't really have too much issue with students being able to get transportation, and a lot of them do carpool as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, of course.
So you would really like to have your own space?
Yes.
Okay.
Somewhere.
Somewhere, somewhere, okay.
And then the other thing is, you know, I hear that you mentioned that we have until November, but just to give you an idea of our timeline, we are going to start meeting mid-September with our returning students, just start new leadership training, getting them prepared to train, working on recruiting new students, and then we start onboarding new students in October, and then in November, we're in the midst of our training. We have November and December to get students trained, so that when that challenge is released, that first weekend in January, we're ready to go. So waiting until November to move is really disruptive to that real important work that we did in the preseason. And we've already started packing. We've got machines prepped and ready to move into, you know, in anticipation, though. We thought we had to be out by September 1st, is what we, we got heard.
So to me, it sounds like you're, you should be heading for Mary Morrison, because I don't see an alternative. We can't clear out the high school. Even if we could, it would wind up being a shared space, because I'm not hearing that we have a dedicated space available yet at the high school. Mary Morrison seems like the only option, so we have to get over this.
Sprinkler system.
Sprinkler is.
It's true. The other thing is true, it's not just that gym space we use, we do need a four or five other classroom spaces. We have different sub-teams. We have a design team that does all the computer aided drafting, so they need a space set up with their computers. Certainly, they're working on stage in the gym, so that's an option. But then we need a separate space for our support team. We need a space for our business team. We have an outreach room and a space for full team meetings. Then we also have a space for our wood shop, where we store our wood and our parents who assemble the robot have a space to do that work. So it isn't just that, you know, that gym space that we need. So I worry too about, does the high school have, I can't imagine a high school has sort of five open classrooms for us to utilize.
So you'd need about five different spaces?
Yes.
And how many of those spaces need sprinkler systems? Just the one, like the gym?
Well, I'm not sure until I talk to the fire marshal.
Okay, all right. Okay.
If they're going to have a wood shop somewhere else in that building, then they're probably going to have to have that sprinkled too, for sure.
Do we have that kind of thing in the high school, though?
What?
Already? Sprinkler systems?
Yeah.
Yeah, but Sherri's saying they don't want a shared space.
Well, they can't share space.
It's not that we don't want to. You know, we are all about utilizing school resources. I think that's fantastic. I just, for safety and functionality, I don't see how it's going to work. And in these classrooms, I don't see that having four or five open classrooms, and if we were to use other teachers' rooms, we can't set up. You know, we've got our business room, we've got our big printers, we've got a big vinyl cutting machine, we've got a paper, you know, all of these things that can't just be moved around all the time.
Why is the fire marshal now requires sprinklers? Before, when it was operating as a school, they didn't require sprinklers.
Different fire district.
All different fire.
Oh, they changed the fire district? It used to be another fire district, and now it's Proquonic Bridge?
Mary Morrison is Proquonic Bridge. Pleasant Valley is the city of Groton.
Oh, what I'm saying is that Mary Morrison was functioning as an elementary school. In other words, the requirement for a sprinkler system, I mean, I know this is kind of academic.
I think it's because of the equipment, right?
He's considering it a manufacturing.
Yeah.
I see, okay. It just, I think it strikes the ordinary person as, well, we don't require sprinklers when there are kids in there, but now that you've got, you know, items in there, and now we require a sprinkler system.
I think that's related to Sherri's concern about safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How soon can you find out, Sam, about the, about the, what was it, the portable sprinklers?
Yeah.
I think Chris gave that information to him.
Yeah, I have it. I gotta, I gotta put it together and get over and see the fire marshal.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. How soon do you think that could happen?
Today, Tuesday?
Tuesday?
I say today's Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
I'll work on it as quickly as I can. Hopefully, I'll have something for him before, and he'll have time to see me before the week's out.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That'd be great.
I don't know if he's around. I haven't talked to him in a while, so I might as well on our vacation, but.
Did we ever think about renting space for them?
Yeah.
And what did you think about that?
It was very costly.
It was very expensive.
Benny's.
Benny's was totally out of the question. There was another space across from the diner, the Bridge Diner, but a, that was pretty expensive too, and then a auto supply place went in there, or something went in there. So there aren't that many spaces available.
How about the industrial buildings down here?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what's available there.
All right, well, hopefully Mary Morrison works out for them.
So do we still want to see the space?
I think you should for the manufacturing, and I think if.
We'd like to see just for the manufacturing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that electric boat and this consultant can, you know, and certainly Sherri and Chris, we'd want you to come over just in case they have ideas that we haven't thought of.
Yeah, and, you know, they might be able to put like walls or whatever.
But, yeah, it sounds like the big issue is they need.
They need to get going soon.
They need a, well, there's the timing, and there's also gym that's set up for that.
They need a large space.
And we don't have a third gym for them to use.
Gym and more classrooms, and safety, safety seems like a big issue too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it would be for a manufacturing center just as well. You'd still have to train people to use the equipment, just like Groton.
No, but for the robotics team, because she was saying, Sherri was saying, you know, they don't want the machine, somebody to hit the machines.
Right, yeah.
No, they don't want, their stuff's going to be out. It's not, we're in, we're out. It's going to be out long-term. They need, they need a setup that's long-term, that's theirs, and, yeah, it sounds like they need a third gym at the high school.
Yeah.
Or spare a comparable space.
And the vintage wing, when that gets reconfigured.
Just have the kids eat, I know, have the kids eat in classrooms and use the cafeteria as their. Don't we laugh at it?
I think that happened during COVID.
Ask if she has anything else she wants to say.
Sherri, you got anything else?
No, I don't think so. Again, thank you for letting me share, and I appreciate you taking the time to come up with a plan. I'm a planner, so I'm getting a little stressed out.
It's okay.
Yeah, don't blame you. I'd be a little stressed out too.
So Sherri, you know how I love the robotics, so I did my little summer donation. So I want an invite to see them, and we're going to get them in a home. Don't worry. We'll figure this out.
We'll be at Groton City Day if anyone wants to stop by.
When is Groton City Day?
August 1st.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Well, I saw the robotics team up at Catherine Kanasky on, what was that, Steam Night? Steam Night, I went, yeah.
Yeah, they were great.
Yeah, they were great. Yeah, they were great. I enjoyed even, I enjoyed talking to the students too. So we'll work on this diligently.
Right, Sam?
Yeah, well, Sam will, anyway. Out of another we.
I'm the boss, man.
We're a royal we.
Right. What's this us?
Sherri, have you seen any other teams and how they've done it in schools? Any suggestions that they, you know, we've been talking about these containers, and then I found this container three-bay garage. Maybe put up one of those for the robotics team, but what have you seen other teams doing in your travels?
You know, I haven't, we, you know, we go to these competitions, we don't necessarily get to see where the teams fuck out of, and a lot of our competitions are at university campuses.
Oh.
So.
Oh, interesting.
Wow.
Oh.
Yeah.
I wonder, yeah.
To come to one of your competitions if it's close by.
I do know that one of the competitions we go to is that Worcester Polytech, Western Mass, and their high school team utilizes space out of the college.
Interesting.
Maybe we can do AV point.
AV point.
Maybe we should look into something like that. I like that idea, although they charge us a lot for the pool, I can't imagine. What about Ledyard?
Yeah, I even, I have not seen their setups, so I'm not sure.
Might be.
I wonder if, if, and my first is, you might be able to.
Yeah.
Do some of that, yeah.
I might reach out to Beth.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
And if we do that walk, I'll invite you just in case they, you know, some of these people from EB, a lot of them have been your mentors, I think. Max was your mentor at one point, and he is one of the people who was a key person in helping us with this manufacturing center, so.
And if you could think of anything, let us know, okay? Don't hesitate to reach out.
And you know how to reach me, Sherri?
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
All righty.
Thank you. Community Wi-Fi grant.
All right, so Clint sent us a message. He's got an update. In June, the town of Groton was awarded $195,000 from the Connecticut Education Network community to extend Wi-Fi for our Groton residents, and as a result, we'll be getting new equipment to be installed for Proquonic Bridge and Branford Manor neighborhoods, and I think mostly in the community center areas, but also in the parking lot, and I think that Wi-Fi can extend, so I don't know that it'll be in all the homes, but it certainly would make access better for our kids to do their homework. And then there's a particular Wi-Fi service for users in education, and that will also be added as a new system. And the application was prepared by Liz Spellman, who we met from the town of Groton, and supported by Tim Candy and Shannon and Clint, and will be administered by the town. And then Groton Public Schools also applied for the second round, which I think I've said in board notes and I've said out loud. And that round of funding was sent in on the 27th to extend Wi-Fi coverage to Groton residents between the middle school campus and the high school campus, so that we have access on all the fields and parking lots and all that space. So I guess if you're sitting there watching, doing sports, you take out your phone, and you have Wi-Fi, I don't know. And then it just talks about broadband access is essential for our students in order for them to achieve and have academic success, and many of them do not have the reliable internet service, so this will definitely provide in those spaces so that they'll have better access.
Well, this is a good grant.
It's a good grant, and it was collaborative.
Yeah, but how much is it going to cost us to maintain the, you know, for maintenance or whatever? Is there, you know, we have the grant, we're going to have the Wi-Fi, is there a yearly cost to us for anything?
I don't, I don't think so. We'll have to ask Clint, but it looks like the people already who are employed by Groton Public Public Schools and Groton Town would be capable of the maintenance part. They do it for our own Wi-Fi, so there's no reason that they couldn't help out.
Without additional payroll costs. Or we're going to be looking.
I don't, I have not seen any payroll. You know, that's never been said to me, that you need more people. I think the people who are boots on the ground between the town and the school who create, you know, who wrote this grant would be able to service if it was needed.
Even if it's a payroll cost, I'd probably be fine with it because it's going to help the people in that area.
Right.
I'd just like to know.
I'll ask him.
When we say Branford Manor, I don't, I mean, it's a large area where we get kids from there. What about, for example, the neighboring from Groton Estates? Do we get any kids from there? Does this is more?
We have kids all over town, so I think, and I don't know if it's installed in the Paquonic Bridge and Branford Manor neighborhoods, so at least that's a start. And maybe it's something that each year we can apply for and grow throughout the town so that we can get. And I think it also is going into the libraries because there's a town side.
Yeah.
The libraries, 555 for better access. I don't think their Wi-Fi has been all that good so that they're really excited about that. So it's a start, and we can certainly add to it, you know, should we need to.
When you, when you say community, it means like adults can use it too, or is it community just for our?
No, for everybody.
For everyone.
Everybody.
Okay, so I was just trying to understand.
From our perspective, you know, we're focused on our kids and having access.
And then the towns focusing on.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why it's a good synergy, you know, of us working collaboratively. And I had said that at the RTM too. It was a really good project.
One day.
Back and go Groton.
Yeah.
Get outdoors.
One day I can cancel my subscription.
What's part two of the grant, did you say?
That's between the Groton Middle School and the Fitch High School, so all the fields.
Okay.
We have graduation, we can do live stream, we have Wi-Fi, so, yeah.
All right. Any questions?
But I will ask if there's any.
No.
Jay, any questions regarding community Wi-Fi grant?
No questions, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, I hear motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Back again.
Yeah. I don't call on you because of your fearlessness, the reliance.
I like that. Fearless, fearless.
You know.
I believe the brain.
All right, there was a, all right, move seconded. No objections, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
He seconded?
Thank you.
Yeah, I heard him second.